I now call the East Lime Zoning Commission regular meeting of May 18th, 2023 to order at 7:30 PM. Could we do the Pledge of Allegiance now?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, on the nation, under God, invisible, liberating, and justice for all.
I'm here. Mr. Granitut.
President.
Ms. Jette Harris.
Here.
Mr. Peck.
Yep.
Mr. Ginsburg. Ms. Markovitz. Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Oh, thank you. And we have Ms. Spang and Mr. Mahalund.
Here.
As you know, we have two vacant, six-month vacancies on our board. Tonight, we are voting to fill one of them. Normally, we would do this under new business, but after consulting with our town attorney, I'm asking that we vote now instead of later in the meeting under new business. So would anyone want to give me a motion to vote now?
Yes, I make a motion that we vote for John Manning. He used to-
A motion to vote now.
Yeah, I'm sorry, a motion to vote now for a vacancy for East Lime Zoning Commission.
Yeah, a second.
I thought we had two vacancies.
We do. We're filling the one for Mr. Dwyer tonight, and then the next one will be next month. We didn't have time to add it to the agenda. It just, he just recently resigned.
Okay.
So do I have a second to vote now?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Do we have any motions or thoughts on filling the vacancy?
I'd like to nominate John Manning. He served four years on the zoning commission previously. He's got an impeccable record. He can work with both parties, both sides, and he did an impeccable job while he served the town before for four consecutive years, before prior, so.
We have a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
I'll just comment, I was an alternate while Mr. Manning was on the board, and I always appreciated his thought process, his calm and thoughtful demeanor. I think he would be a great person to fill in for six months. Any other comments?
Are you taking other nominations?
Well, we have a motion on the floor, so we need to vote on this.
Do you?
It's not a public hearing, sorry.
What are we doing? That's called a nomination.
Are there any other?
I don't think there are any nominations.
Okay, well, we can do, are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Denise Markovitz as a regular member of the zoning board.
Do we have a second? Any seconds? We do not have a second? Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? All right, we have one with a second. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain. All right, Mr. Manning will be the new regular member for the next six months. Moving on to public delegations, this is the time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission on subject matters that are not on the agenda. Is anyone here wanting to speak on something that is not on the agenda?
I would like to know if we're going to address anything about regarding senior-
You need to go to the podium, please, and state your name and address for the record.
I'm very shy, so we'll try this. My name is Margot Orlander, 2602, the sound by The Cove.
Okay.
Excuse me, I have laryngitis. Most people are thankful for that. I hope that you can all bear with me. Is this going to be this evening? Are we going to chit chat about the senior housing situation, lack of it, here tonight? Is this the appropriate time?
I'm more happy to hear your comments on it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what's your name again, please?
My name is Margot, M-A-R-G-O-T, Orlander, O-R-L-A-N-D-E-R.
Can I have that address again?
6202, the, at Stoneview. It's Maple, Maple Tree Lane. It's just that I'm embarrassed to say that. Few weeks ago, maybe even a month ago, I talked with someone who was in government, maybe keeps her or his hand in it now, on the telephone for about two and a half hours talking about the senior citizen housing situation. And I said to the person, "Where is it? I have nowhere to go. I'm living in it near The Cove, and that, next to one Costco, and as you all know, it's expensive. It's $3,000 a month just for a three-bedroom apartment." The problem is that the person answered me and said, "Well, there's a 30% law that has been put into effect that any contractor who is doing residential building must put aside 30% for rental income." I haven't seen that happen. I'm seeing a $1.8 million apartment go up to be bought. I'm hearing about $2,500 to $3,000 apartments going from the bridge to Great Neck, and then on the other side, apartment buildings of the same. The person said to me, which made the greatest effect, and I hope makes an effect on you, whether it affects you today, if this project is taking seven years, it will affect you.
That's on our agenda tonight, so we can't, that's not for the public delegation. If you have comments in general about affordable housing, that's fine, but we can't speak specifically on that project and public delegation.
I'm sorry, you're talking about what, what project?
On Holmes Road, is that what you're talking about? No? No?
No, okay. I mentioned to the person that I was talking, the person that I was talking to said to me that this was a planned community, an inclusive planned community. And I said to the person, "When you have a group of people who are invisible and are not included in, on this community, it's not inclusive, and that's senior citizens. I'm 73. I have to think about that." I'm on a five-year waiting list right now. Five-year waiting list. Who knows if I'll even be alive by then? I certainly hope so, but who knows? It seems to, and then the person asked me where I thought affordable housing could go for senior citizens. Well, we have 380 acres left over from the original 1,000 acres where Costco is.
Margot, I'm sorry, we can't talk about affordable housing at this time?
Affordable housing.
Because it's coming up, yeah. When you say the word-
Senior citizen housing, how's that? That's better. Okay. Affordable senior citizen, places where senior citizens have a place to go, because right now, we don't. And I was told, "Well, where would you like us to put it?" Folks, do I have to tell you where that one went? There's 380 acres left over. There is no reason why we can't put in senior citizen building there. It would make senior citizens available to 95. It would make senior citizens independent to be able to go shopping. It would make senior citizens feel part of the community. Their tax dollars for whether they started here in the 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s, or 90s, or 2000s, have gone to build the structures that are here today, the swimming pool, the senior center, whatever it is that we have, it's due to them. Okay? It's called OPM, Other People's Money. State didn't give this to us for free. I said, "Why don't you take down the motel hell? Motel hell, get rid of the drugs?" I happened to stay there for two weeks, and it was a horror show. Be that as it may, take it down. And the person responded to me by telling me, "Well, we took down the cleaning, the wash, the car washing place. We're putting in another one." Are you saying to me, "I'm supposed to sleep there? They're gonna have pods like they do in Japan, and we're just gonna rent little pods?" I want to know, I want to be, if I accomplish nothing more tonight, what I want to accomplish is, I would rather be on the side of the solution than be on the side of the problem. The problem is senior citizens who have been paying the way for this town to go in the direction that it's going in, to have a place to live. Okay?
We understand. Thank you so much for your comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda?
Hello, it's Nick Menepace, 38 Hope Street in Niantic. So the only thing I really wanted to comment tonight, and I'll keep it very brief, was that seeing some of the new developments we have, I was reminded about one of the things over on the veterinary thing, which I'm not talking about that, but it just made me think about how much I love the walkability of downtown Niantic. Now, one of the things I just wanted to comment on, and I know we, is how, I love the idea for making any type of new development in our town, making sure it's accessible for walking. I know that when I've spoken to a lot of people, a huge thing they've talked about is that as soon as you leave that downtown area, it's so difficult to be able to access. People will literally drive there to be able to walk around, even when you're just going on, you know, two streets over. Feels like it's, it's insane to me that we can't just easily walk to the book barn. And I know some people are brave enough to walk on the street on there. I know it gets very narrow, and I'm, and I know it's something that people are already looking at for the, gosh, the route that they're gonna try and do for that one, but I would really love to see that any new development, the idea of prioritizing things like walkability, even just bikeability, for being able to have that is a great way of alleviating traffic. It is a great way of trying to make things more accessible for all of our citizens, and I think it's something that I would love to see the zoning board take into account when considering any new developments that we have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else tonight that'd like to speak on something that is not on the agenda? Oh, okay, well, why don't we move into our public hearing? The first thing we have up is the application of Dr. Kara Obodowski of the Niantic Veterinary Hospital for special permit to operate a veterinary practice at Nine Lake Avenue, Niantic, assessors map 11.2, Lot 131. Mr. Mahalund, was the legal ad run?
It was, thank you.
Oh, let me take a minute, and we have two alternates here, so before we start the public, continue with it, could we please send Mr. Ginsburg and Mr. Schmidt? Thank you. Our secretary had to leave, so I will read the memo. Oh, that would be awesome. So from here to here, thank you. Memo to East Lime Zoning Commission from William Mahalund, zoning official, resign special permit application for Dr. Kara Obodowski, Nine Lake Avenue, Niantic, date May 4th, 2023. The applicant is acquiring the existing property and business identified in the application as the Niantic Animal Hospital at Nine Lake Avenue and Niantic Village. This is an existing ongoing facility, which is simply changing owners. The business currently consists of a first-floor veterinary clinic with a second-floor apartment. The subject property is an established mixed-use building, which is non-conforming, having been established many years ago. The new owner is seeking a special permit to ensure opportunities to intensify the business in the future. The use is permitted under Section 9.2.5, subject to controls in Sections 25.5, a copy is attached. This section provides criteria within the facility must operate, see Items 1 through 8. In addition, should the commission approve the application, it would bring the business further into conformity. Should the commission deny the application, the business could continue under its pre-existing conditions. Is Dr. Obodowski here tonight? Oh, would you mind stepping up to the podium? Thank you. And if you could state your name and address for the record?
Kara Obodowski, Nine Lake Ave., Niantic. So I'm the new owner of Niantic Animal Hospital as of May 8th, as of last Monday, and I'm applying for special permit just to continue using the facility as a small animal hospital, the same hours of operation that it had been under Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, 8:30 to 5:00 p.m., and Thursdays, 8:30 to 6:00 p.m., and Saturdays, 8 to 1:00. And it's still just small animals, dogs and cats, so.
Okay, do we have any questions from the commission?
Can I ask you a question? Do you have any plans currently to make any changes?
I do not.
Now, question for Bill. What makes this non-conforming?
Back when it was originally established, established many, many, many years ago, it was non-conforming in terms of use. Subsequently, they had been added to the reg, and they did not obtain special permit because they didn't exist some years ago. It was originally represented by Attorney Harris, and we concluded that it was non-conforming. So this is an attempt to make it more conforming, so should there be opportunity to expand the physicality of the boundaries of the zoning code, that opportunity exists.
Is this the CB zone?
Yes.
Okay.
Right next to the library, the old library.
So if, so if it needed to be, or wanted to be expanded, there would have to be a process for that to-
Absolutely, there's a process.
Okay.
This is the status quo.
Okay.
Mr. Markovitz, did you want your microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
Does the public have any comments tonight? No? Okay, I, I'm asking for a motion to close the hearing on the veterinary.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And the next item on our agenda is the continuation of proposed text amendment, East Lime Zoning Regulation, Niantic Village, all mixed use. We left this open so the commission could review the record. Mr. Peck, did you have anything more to add? You presented it last time.
I don't think so, except a reminder that over the years, especially in the last month or two, the public has spoken very loudly about being discouraged when they see an old section of buildings being torn down, some of them historic. I think this regulation, this amendment will curb that.
Okay, does, is there anybody in the audience that has any comments on the text amendment? You need to stand up to the podium. Then state your name again.
Address, too?
Why not?
Margot Orlander, 2602, Maple Tree Lane, East Lime. I have not seen, I have been following all the news that's going on and all the big things, and progress needs to be made, and I understand that, and I accept it. And I think some change is good, but when you take away the feeling of a town, the spirit of a town, places where, I'm only here 14 years, but there are people that grew up here. Having stated that, can you please familiarize me, if it's appropriate, about this amendment to, I know nothing about it?
Okay, in summary, we are proposing to disallow mixed-use development, with several exceptions. Examples of mixed-use development that had caused us to come to this table, the recent, the Norton Building.
Yes.
Nothing wrong with it. And then the new proposal that was approved, taking down the restaurant-
Cafe Sol.
Cafe Sol, the apartment building, which is 1800's home, and then a third building. And across the street, the Bayside, I believe it's called, several, a couple buildings were taken down there, all the first-generation Niantic buildings taken down for that. We basically want to curb that and save that which has helped downtown Niantic thrive, and try to preserve the charm, preserving the first-generation small buildings in the village. And this amendment only applies to the village, the CB zone. The exceptions to this amendment would be if someone had, for example, a one-story building, retail, retail building, for example, and they wanted to put a second floor on with mixed use, as long as they use the same footprint, that would be okay. Or if someone had an existing two-story building, and they wanted to convert the upstairs offices into apartments, that would be mixed use, and that would be still acceptable, as long as they use the same footprint. So this way, we preserve these buildings and discourage the tearing down of many. That's pretty much it.
I appreciate it, and what I want to say is, oh, I hope nobody kicks me out when I tell them this, but I, as an original downstate of New York City, New York City people expect the best. They sell their condo for $18 million, come here by one, for $1.8 million, they're way ahead of the game. With that, they expect to have the accoutrements that they're used to, 24 hours a day, and that's what I'm seeing happening. It's not just senior citizens that are going to be impacted by this, it will be the family of four that won't be able to go to that new restaurant, or Deb's, or Lilian's, or any of these, and we're going to have to give them dress shops and places where they can go. They're going to expect it, and that's what concerns me. It's not just the smell of the change and atmosphere, it is the fact that we, who are we catering to if not people that can afford $2,500 to $3,000 a month for the apartments that are planned to go up here? Who are we catering to? I thank you very much for your patience for me.
Thank you. Does anyone else here tonight?
I just had one quick question, and I appreciate it for Mr. Peck on that one, because I wanted to see if I understood something correctly for the amendment that was proposed. So if they say a building, even just a small one, like let's say, well, any of the ones that are two stories on here, is it possible with the amendment that if a owner came in and decided to demolish the building and rebuild it, but it was like, let's say, a two-story building, could they choose to do that? They want to come in, and they want to get rid of it, they're gonna put in a, you know, there was, let's say, a restaurant, and there's an apartment on top, they're gonna bulldoze that, they're going to turn it into something else in the bottom, it's still mixed use, and then on the top, they put in, you know, a brand-new condo or something?
So you're talking about using the same footprint?
Yes.
Bill, what-
As, as it's stationed in proposal to date, you can add, in a CB zone, you can add a second-floor residential unit over an existing first-floor commercial use in existing buildings. Square footage to be no greater than the existing first-floor area. Second-floor residential units may be added as a new second-floor addition to an existing one-story building. Parking in accordance with the appropriate section height as per the code, subject to architectural design review, and must have meaningful water and sewer. That's how the proposal reads presently.
So, an existing building-
It's all existing.
Somebody tears it down, puts the same size, same footprint, a new building, that probably, it sounds like that's gonna be acceptable.
Okay, I mean, I, oh, sorry.
However, economics, feasibility may kick in here. Is it worth tearing down a building, putting up the same-sized building? What seems to work, you look around, what's going on in these downtown areas, is tearing down several, putting up a big, the profit is there. The profit may not be there, tearing down a small building and rebuilding the same small building, same size. So at least, we're gonna discourage, to a certain degree, demolition.
I suppose where I do come concerned is that, I really love some of the mixed use that that, those small buildings possess, and even with somewhere like, I think the only one, like, really large that's still in there is a place where, like, Main Street Grill is, is that those have, you know, it's a restaurant, obviously, and then there's small apartments in the back, and I just hesitate, because we saw with our old, the house that's right next to Cafe Sol, I can't remember the address for it, that with that, there was some concern for me, because this is some smaller apartments that, not necessarily the best apartments, they are more affordable, and it's a little disappointing to me to see the, you know, demolished and put in new ones, that I would hope there would be some consideration that if there was a proposal that obviously, hopefully, will be not very economical to come in and bulldoze a small building, but perhaps one of these others, and I hate these few of the residents who can currently afford to live in Niantic because they live in those ones, to be kicked out and made way for some brand-new condos for that.
Yeah, this is, the other thought is that, you know, patching up, maintaining the old buildings, by doing that, I think you can keep the rent-
Yeah.
Reasonable.
And I agree. And that's just something I would love the board to consider, obviously, you'll, you know, make your choices, and hopefully, as you said, this one does preserve some of what we have currently for that, you know, I think people love, as you said, the charm of downtown Niantic. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't know if I didn't state my name for the record again, I don't remember, but hopefully you remember who I am and what I said.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have one last comment, and I swear to God, the check is still out.
Okay, you have 10 minutes, go for it.
Because I actually, at 73, I forgot, okay. The other thing that concerns me is I did grow up in a small town, and I did see this happen in a small town before we moved to New York City. So all the big-box stores are brought in, Lowe's is closing all of its stores, as we know, as of 2023, they will be closed. On the block, for $4 million, the mall went, they haven't said what's going to happen. Here's what concerns me. When we do all of this wonderful work, and we bring in all these apartment buildings, we will need more police officers, we will be using more electric, we will be using more town services, we will be needing things that we haven't even thought about, and that is a concern. Has the board taken in to consideration that our overhead for the town will go up, which means to me, taxes will go up?
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else from the public have a comment?
Yeah.
Sure. We do have your email, we would read in, but if you want to state it instead, that's fine.
Oh, well, let me just say, summarize then.
Okay.
Gary Pivo, 4 Colonial Drive. Thank you, Norm, for the summary, that was very helpful. I support mixed use on a small scale, the way you're describing it, so I think the exceptions make good sense. But one of the issues that still seems outstanding or not addressed, and it's not necessarily exclusively a mixed-use issue, is the possibility that the large-scale projects could go in by acquiring, like ZDM did, several adjoining lots, effectively buying an entire block, and putting in a single, long, wide, commercial building, and thus, in that way, changing the character away from, you know, the nature of the area that is comprised of, to a large degree, you know, converted homes and houses historically and so forth, and then the commercial. And so I'm wondering if that scenario is feasible under the current code, and if so, please, I suggest you consider ways to control that by controlling with the buildings, or the number of lots that can be merged, and so forth, there are various ways that can be done.
That's why in the text amendment, it says existing buildings, so they write, Bill?
So you've got to stick with existing buildings, insofar as you're doing mixed use? Is that what you're saying, right?
Yes.
What I'm saying, insofar as you're not doing mixed use at all, you're just demolishing existing buildings and putting up commercial use?
It has to be the existing building, the same size, the same footprint.
So even for a commercial redevelopment, you cannot, under the code, is this correct? You cannot demolish several buildings that are adjoining, like ZDM is, and put in a wide, commercial, not mixed-use building?
This is, we're addressing mixed use.
Just mixed use, I get that.
The reason is because that seems to be the thing that's, you know, clearing, clearing out all these old places, I mean.
Yeah, well, clearly, the larger and the taller and the bigger, whatever the use is, the more the opportunity, the more economics it makes sense to do that. But I'm just suggesting there's another threat or risk here, which is, you know, to the extent that some of the new retail takes off, that has become pretty exciting, and coming from places that who never, no one ever expected such high-end retail would start to show up, you do get the, you may well have sufficient demand to support significant new, block-wide, retail-only, that will completely change the character of the place. And so that may require a different amendment, not related to mixed use, but I'm just saying that when, one of the things people were particularly upset about with respect to ZDM, for example, was not necessarily only the height, it was also the width that contributes to the scale.
We tried a couple of years ago to pass an amendment that limited any new construction to 5,000 square feet, and it got shut down. It was a little bit, kind of a big pill to swallow.
Yeah.
But when you are up here, you can try again.
I can take it on. You know, there's ways to allow for large-scale projects, too, that are more than 5,000 and so forth and so on, that are wide, but that are, that look like a series of separate houses, for example, and a good architect can make that sort of thing, pull that sort of thing off. So there's, it's not just the, literally, the number of square feet, it's also going to be done in the design, so. Okay, you understand what I'm concerned.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, you're welcome.
Anyone else in the public have any comment on the mixed-use text amendment? Going once, going twice? Do I have a motion to close this hearing if the commission members don't have any more comments?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Please. I noticed a letter here from Planning Commission that has, raises some concerns that they have, but reading the letter, I do not see why they have those concerns. I think they're dealt with in the verbiage of the amendment, so I wanted to ask Bill if those concerns have been addressed.
Was that not at their meeting? I don't attend them, and I don't know what their thinking process was. We have their comments, I think they were read in the.
They were read in a previous meeting.
And it is what it is. Yeah, I cannot tell you what their thinking was in terms of how they arrived at their comments.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
There are sections in the plan of development that do support preservation of historic structures, and I don't know where the Planning Board is coming from in regards to their comments, so.
It is what it is. Okay, anyone else? Do I have a motion to close this hearing?
Some others?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against? Abstain? Okay, hearing closed.
Madam Chairman, if I may, before you move on to the next item, perhaps we should take a two-minute break so the applicant can sit up at the table, and I think either they're halfway there, but you probably want to take a couple of minutes to.
Okay, great. Why don't we do that? We'll meet back in maybe three minutes.
Thank you.
I'm smiling. I have a question for you. Is your husband named?
P-I-V-A.
Because I went to school with her.
Yep. She majored. Oh, my God. Yeah, I usually miss one of them. Previous one. Yeah.
All the little things that, like, you know.
You've got to read all about it. You tell me when, I'll read it. It's five pages.
Good thing you brought your glasses.
Actually, I don't need them if it's this close. The problem is, is at nighttime, because I read six hours a day, so it's like my brain is wired that I have to, so I look at all things, but like, by the end of the day, if it's like this, I can read it. Because I'm not so-so tired. I just have to, I don't know what it is. So I just have this, and then, and then I'm done. I don't know if I have a consultation, I have questions, I don't know if it's. Oh, that's why I kept saying.
Didn't come through as saturated.
I only know because I'm still a person. That's okay, there you go. Well, I think we have, we use a different brand, we use a good different brand. I have a costume, I have another one coming, so. I guess we have people. They're all like. Who sent me a name? Why is it so weird? I know people. Well, please, go front, but I don't know what. Why? I know a lot of people in Montpel, Ryan, and all along, they go way back.
This is still blocky, can this get moved over?
Margot Olander? Oh, wait.
Are you ready, counsel?
Okay, we're good. We're calling the meeting back to order. We're ready for the next item, which is the application of Kristen Clark, P.E., for conceptual site plan review for an affordable housing multifamily residential development pursuant to CGS 830G at property located on Holmes Road, East Line, assessors map 55.0, Lot 30. Mr. Mahalan, did you run the legal ad?
Yes.
Thank you. We have a memo from our town attorney that we'd like to read into the record. Okay, I've just been told this is from Attorney Carey, I believe it's C-A-R-E-Y.
Do you want me to read it now?
Yes, please. Ms. Jette Harris will read the memo, it's a little lengthy, so hang in there.
Outline CGS 8-30G Law 518, 2023, Connecticut General Statutes 8-30G. A, as used to the section, as used in this section and Section 8-30J. Number one, affordable housing development means a proposed housing development, which is A, assisted housing, or B, a set-aside development. Two, an affordable housing application means any application made to a commission in connection with an affordable housing development by a person who proposes to develop such affordable housing. Number four, commission means a zoning commission, planning commission, planning and zoning commission, zoning board of appeals, or municipal agency exercising zoning or planning authority. Five, municipality means any town, city, or borough, whether consolidated or unconsolidated. B, number one, any person filing an affordable housing application with a commission shall submit as part of the application an affordability plan which shall include at least the following. A, designation of the person, entity, or agency that will be responsible for the duration of any affordability restrictions for the administration of the affordability plan and its compliance with the income limits and sale, price, or rental restrictions of this chapter. B, an affirmative action fair housing marketing plan governing the sale or rental of all dwelling units. C, a sample calculating of the maximum sale prices or rents of the intended affordable housing dwelling units. D, a description of the projected sequence in which, within a set-aside development, the affordable dwelling units will be built and offered for occupancy and general location of such units within the proposed development. And E, draft zoning regulations, conditions of approvals, deeds, restrictive covenants, or lease provisions that will govern the affordable dwelling units. C, any commission by regulation may require that an affordable housing application seeking a change of zone, including the submission of any conceptual site plan describing the proposed development's total number of residential units and their arrangement on a property and a proposed development's roads and traffic circulation, sewage disposal, and water supply. F, except as provided in subsections K and L of this section, any person whose affordable housing application is denied or is approved with restrictions which have a substantial adverse impact on the viability of the affordable housing development or the degree of affordable, of the affordability of the affordable dwelling units in a set-aside development, may appeal such decision pursuant to the procedures of this section. Such appeals shall be filled, filed within the time period for filing appeals as set forth in Section 8-8, 8-9, 8-28, or 8-30A, as applicable and shall be made returnable to the Superior Court for the judicial district where the real property which is the subject of the application is located. Except as otherwise provided in this section, appeals involving an affordable housing application shall proceed in conformance with the provisions of Section 8-8, 8-9, 8-28, or 8-30A as applicable. G, upon an appeal taken under Section F of this section, the burden shall be on the commission to prove, based upon the evidence and the record compiled, before such commission that the decision from which the appeal is taken and the reasons cited for.
For the record, please.
Sure, for the record, Paul Garrity, Garrity Manato, 38 Flanders Street, New London, Connecticut. With me is Tim May, a professional engineer who's one of the engineers on the project. And I represent the applicant, 15 P Clark, who's also a professional licensed engineer in Connecticut as well.
Thank you.
May proceed.
Yes, please.
Just a couple of housekeeping matters I'd like to approach and submit to chair a letter that I wrote. And this may be in the record, I'm not sure, it was in Coral Day today, so I don't know. A letter to Mr. Mahalan, dated April 3rd regarding two questions that he raised when the application was originally filed. The first was whether-
That's submitted as Exhibit A.
And the first question in there, which is the first big question, is whether we had a zone changing application as part of this conceptual site plan request. The answer to that very succinctly, no. And then explaining why. The second item is a letter from Ms. Clark to Mr. Mahalan. This letter is stated, it's not, it's in response to Mr. Gashell's memo of May 16, 2023, which we received yesterday regarding the planning commission. Comments on that, and I'll go over that letter in a moment.
And this will be Exhibit B?
And then, the next item is a sightline map prepared by Mr. May with regard to the sightlines on the 38th and 5th. No, excuse me, and the entrance to the property.
Okay, we have Exhibit C. Thank you.
And just for, for my benefits, since we started with A, B, C, I assume that the application itself and the accompanying documents, we are in the record or were made a part of the record?
They are part of the record.
Yes.
But if you want to sum up that, Madam Chairman, for the record, please.
We'll add those, thank you.
I just wanted to make sure, because I know we're starting. So, this application is for affordable housing. It's a mix of single-family and multifamily. But I want to point out that this is partly possible by the fact that the current owner of Deval Properties had reached a deal with the Eastlime Land Trust to convey over 300-plus acres into open space that surrounds this property and many of the other properties in the area. And then I'd like to address Mr. Gashell's letter to Mr. Mahalan, or his memo. My client goes into a fair amount of detail, even given the short notice on that. But one of the things that struck me when I read his memo is he keeps referring to the 2009 Plan of Conservation and Development. You no longer have an active 2009 Plan of Conservation and Development. The commission, Plan of Commission adopted it in 2020, and it appears on a review of that, that many of the issues that he raised in terms of what was suggested in the Plan of Conservation and Development are no longer in the 2020 Plan of Conservation and Development. So I point that out for the commission's edification on that, that I think that the memo really doesn't address any particular issues that are germane to this particular application. I won't belabor Mr. Carey's memo on that, other than to point out where I do believe that we are in compliance with both the state statute and with the affordable housing regulations for the town of Leoline, or, excuse me, town of Eastlime.
Eastlime, thank you.
As I was over there not too long ago. So, Section 830-G, 77, makes clear that an application for an affordable housing plan may be done on a conceptual basis. The idea behind that is to determine whether or not the application is going to receive a favorable review, not necessarily a final approval, but a favorable review, so that an applicant isn't put through a series of courses where he has to go spend significant amounts of money, only to receive a denial after denial after denial. And so therefore, we are applying tonight for conceptual site plan approval. What that means essentially at the end of the day is we have to obtain other approvals. In this particular case, I think the only one that we actually need is Ledlight Health District, because the septic systems are all going to be contained on the proposed lots themselves. There isn't, as I've seen it at this moment, any other administrative approvals that would be required. But we would have to develop further in detail the actual plans, assuming that we can get the Ledlight approval, which is going to drive ultimately, as you know, a number of the lots that, or the number of lots that we can have.
Excuse me, is your position that you need Ledlight and not the State Health Department?
Correct, we're not. These are all going to be individually served, so it would be under Ledlight.
Thank you.
Moreover, under Section 32.9 in your zoning regulations, and Mr. Carey has gone through that in there, there are three alternative approaches, and your own regulations provide for conceptual approval. The requirements for that are that it be greater than five acres, this property is, that we have a detail, we have a site plan detailing the layout of the buildings, which we do, you can see it right here, that there's a table showing a number of units, that's in the actual application itself, that there's an affordability plan that is also in the application itself, traffic impact report, we have a preliminary traffic impact report in the application itself, the soil types are designated on the plan that I submitted from Mr. May. We have a preliminary stormwater management plan as well, topographical contours, proposed sewage disposal areas, and elevation and floor plans, which is a good segue to go to my PowerPoint presentation. So, the area of the proposed development is off Holmes Road, as you know, and, let's see, I know, I've got a-
Can you go to full screen with that?
I have a presentation.
Let's see, probably can. So, this is the area where the application is being proposed. The area that surrounds it here, if you can see the cursor, is the open space, with the exception of this property off to the, my left on there. And, let's see, go to the next one. These, this is the site plan with contours. You can see the proposed area for the septic, right here, the galleys there. See if I can increase it a little bit more. We have potential well locations on there. So, it consists of 19 single-family homes and 24 townhouses. And this is the soils map, so if the yellow lines delineate the different soils on there, there are no wetland soils on the property, therefore, there is no wetlands approval required and no wetland study done on that. These, so if it goes to the next slide, will it not? No.
Can you make a full screen, sir?
I can't do anything right now, because my connection to the PowerPoint has-
Oh boy.
What's the amount of the townhouses again, please?
There are 24 townhouses and 19 single-family homes.
And 19, okay.
Let's see. Told by Mr. Dennis Lane, the other commission member, once the red light comes back on, we're going to have to do, but it's not going back on.
I mean, if we have to, we can do it the old-fashioned way.
Yeah, so, frankly, probably easier, so. Let's see, it says it's ready to share, but it's not. Nope, there we go.
Okay.
Great. This is what the preliminary designs look like for the single-family. This one? I got it, yeah, that's going, so, I'll be there. Oh, okay. Yeah, I know, which one? This one right here? You can tell this is-
Little, little thing.
This one right here. Okay, there we go. Now, I lost my little part of the bow, so. This is the townhomes, in terms of the conceptual drawings for those. These would be the layouts with the floor plan for the townhomes. This is the sightline profile that I submitted earlier, so you can see that the two entrances and exits have adequate sightline for that. This is the contour of that. And that is basic for that. So, the, we're not proposing any open space, and there's frankly actually some caselets that's not required in affordable housing projects, because it ends up defeating the purpose of the affordable housing on that. But, as I said, Duval Properties, or Duval Partners, excuse me, LLC, which owns this piece and retained it, conveyed the balance of the properties to the Eastlime Land Trust. There are no endangered state or federal species listed on the property. Sewage disposal report, we're, as I said, we're using individual systems, so we will have to go through the local health department for that. The proposed lots that we're having will also all be served by onsite wells. There's a preliminary stormwater management plan for the project on here, that Mr. May has prepared. And the road, the internal roads, we're not proposing any changes to the external roads. The traffic would flow out from Holmes Road to Route 85 and head either north or south, depending upon which way the person was heading, obviously, but also depending which way they were. With respect to easements, there will be easements required for electrical. We are in the process of, as we get there, dealing with ever-source to, when the plan's a little bit further detailed, as to where we would need utility easements on that. The affordability plan on this has been submitted to you as well, and just, there is an analysis in the affordability plan with respect to what the anticipated rents would be. And I should indicate, these are going to be rentals, not outright sales. But if you look at, my client did some pro forma calculations on that, and we have designated Evergreen Entainable Homes, Inc. as the affordable housing manager, or to manage the plan, I should say, on that.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
I can't seem to find it in here. I'm sure it's probably in your very detailed presentation. For the 19, what?
It could be in here, too.
Yeah, for the 19 single-family homes that you showed us, what's the square footage on that, and the bedrooms, how many bedrooms? And what's the square footage for the townhouses, and how many bedrooms do they have? What's your plan for that?
So, the, the townhouses are two bedrooms. I don't have the exact square footage, because what I have are the dimensions for the bedrooms would be 12 by 11, for one, 11 by 11 for another. The living room, dining room, and kitchen area, the living area downstairs is, or on the, I always never call this the first floor or the second floor, I think they call it the first floor, but it's in, it's the floor in the middle. The living area is 14 by 15, the kitchen is 11 by 8, the dining area is 11 by 9, and then on the ground level is the garage, which is 10 by 20, and additional space, we marked the office on here, 14 by 12. I, let me double check, I don't think I have the square, the gross square footage for the house at this point. Is there preliminary?
So, Mr. Mahalan, I have a question. When it comes to the square footage of the bedrooms, because it's an affordable housing application, do they still have to adhere to what the Eastlime-
No.
They don't? Okay. The regulations of-
Those are, hold on.
Okay, all right.
But I will, I will share, this particular time, with all due respect to Madam Chair, our consulting attorney couldn't be here due to COVID this evening, so he'll be here at the next meeting, should this go forward to another hearing and be extended. And we'll be getting additional information at that time.
Okay, good, thank you.
But however, I do note that 830-G supersedes local zoning regulations, as stated in the memo read at the beginning of the hearing.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
I should also point out, too, that, and you may be familiar with this as commission members, but this had been approved for over 70 units, single-family with a golf course back in the, probably would have been late 1990s, early 2000s, with community septic that had been approved by DEEP at the time.
Six hundred.
When the economy turned south, that project failed, and the bank foreclosed on it, and then Duval Partners ended up owning it subsequent to that. And this was their approach to try and do something with the property in order to that.
But, but the acreage was not this, that was more substantial, it was a golf course, and I think it was-
That's correct.
-70-plus units, and they were active adult units.
Dan, can I hear you?
With a clubhouse.
Oh. Well, you got a chuck in the mic, please, you can't hear you in the back.
There was an active adult approval, 70-plus units, a clubhouse, and I think a 19, might have been a 20, oh, golf course.
That's right.
I was just going to say, the reason Attorney Garrity brought that up is because of the traffic impacts. So, that was a much more-
They're having trouble hearing you.
Do you want to move to the mic?
The mic, thank you.
Timothy May, May Engineering. I just wanted to say that the reason why Mr. Garrity brought that up was to, to, to talk about the traffic impacts. That was one of the things that we're required to discuss here. This was previously approved by the town of Eastlime for 70 homes-
Seventy.
-and a golf course, which is a much more traffic-intensive environment. So I just wanted to point that out, that this is 19 homes and 26 townhouses, so it's not the same level of traffic.
And that particular application was approved, both because part of this property is in Monville, or I should say, part of the open space now, that the client transferred to the land trust, was in Monville, and at the time, it was proposed to be used as a golf course. It was approved by both the town of Monville and the town of Eastlime at that time.
Okay, thank you.
So, we're asking, and I, having had preliminary conversations with Mr. Mahalan, I assume that the matter's going to be continued, so that staff can provide comments, et cetera.
Well, I'd like, since you handed us this book to read, I'd like to continue the hearing, so we'd have time to study it.
Absolutely.
But in the meantime, does the public have any comment they'd like to make?
I, I believe so, yes.
Madam Chairman, Mr. Garrity, are you finished?
I, I am, I just want to, pardon?
Are you finished at this time of your presentation, if you have more?
I thought they were, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
I would like to go over the design a little bit, if you could. Paul, turn to the, I guess it would be the, the site plan, overall site plan. Yep, that's the one. And just trying to, I wanted to go over, it's got a full circulation, it's a private drive to access all the homes and the multifamilies, to the bottom of the page there. We already showed the sightline, a couple of things. All these, all the septic systems are sized for three-bedroom homes, and there is adequate space for a, a primary reserve. And the, the multifamily townhouses are all sized below the 7,500 gallons per day, so we don't, we can use the local health department for that approval. I have stormwater runoff to, to match water quality volumes and water quality flows. In addition, each home will have rain gardens to, to reduce the amount of roof runoff, and that will keep it, keep it within the, the norms of the water quality. The, the site is fairly level, there's no wetlands, no watercourses, and there's no slopes over 25%. I just want to make sure, because that's part of the requirements that have to be listed here. And does anybody have any questions on the layout or the site plan?
No, I just have a question on what you just said about rain gardens. I like rain gardens, so would you be doing native plants?
Yes, that's the, well, it's the, there's a prescription for that in the DEP manual, Stormwater Quality Manual. That's, it's fairly straightforward. It's, it's, they're drought-resistant type plants, because the rain garden by nature is going to be dry most of the time, so they're plants that would thrive in a, a dry environment, as well as a, getting their feet wet, so to speak.
Yep. Would there be any landscaping between the homes and Holmes Road? Like, would there be trees between the houses and Holmes Road?
There's trees now.
Will they keep those?
We're not proposing clearcutting the sites. There's a 50-foot setback from the road or thereabouts. Other than what we need for water quality, I think that should be maintained. That'd be my opinion.
Mr. Mahalan?
Attorney Garrity, recognizing this is a conceptual plan under 830-G, you did submit some materials on traffic and supplemental traffic report. Is that something you can go over, or have your traffic expert go over?
Traffic expert is not here tonight, but if-
Would your traffic expert be available at the next commission meeting to talk about this issue?
I think we can arrange for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we don't, we don't see, in terms of the traffic impact, and I have been in touch with the town plan from the town of Monville to discuss that, because after, I don't, I don't recall the exact distance, but within a 700 feet or so, you're crossing the Monville Town Line and going out in there. Madam Chair, to dress your, looking at the site plan, you can see that this area up here is the buffer from the project to the road, so that's going to remain. We are, I mean, recognizing, scrolling a little too fast here with these, but recognizing these are conceptual and architectural or artist renderings of, of the project, but this is what we're, the landscaping around that property would look like, or anticipated would look like.
Do you have any more you'd like to present tonight?
Not less than a minute, I need one minute.
Does the commission have any more questions tonight? To, is, would anyone like to speak for the project?
Before you get there, Madam Chair, I believe the commission, or I would suggest that you continue the public hearing to the next meeting, so that you can digest all the information.
Of course.
And then, obviously, you're going to want to include the public comments for, against, or neutral. Obviously, we need additional information. I think it's important that we hear about traffic from their traffic expert. And of course, at the next meeting, I think there will be some staff comments coming in as well, just to kind of project forward, if I may. Thank you.
Thank you. For the public that's here tonight, that cannot come to the next meeting, though, if there's no one to speak in favor, is there anyone to speak against the project? Please step up and state your name and address.
New Rassicot, 38 Holmes Road. The first thing I'd like to say is, traffic impact, I think, is comical. If you've ever been on Holmes Road, you can't pass a FedEx truck on the Monville section of Holmes Road. So clearly, somebody hasn't been up Holmes Road. I've, I lived on Holmes Road for six years now, and that has been an issue since I've moved in there. There's a distinct difference between snow removal on the Monville side and the Eastlime side, the Monville side being the biggest slope at probably more than a 15% grade coming up Holmes Road from Salem Turnpike. The other thing that shows is, where's, where's the water coming from? Is there water up there?
Can you answer that?
Is it water to serve the units, or is it fire protection?
Where's your potable water and fire protection?
Potable water is in the ground, just like yours, just like everybody else that's in the area. Fire protection, we are in discussions with the land trust in order to have access to a fire pond on that property.
A fire, a fire pond on the property of the land trust?
Correct.
And how is that going to be accessed?
We haven't determined, we're negotiating with them right now as to that, but there would be an easement that would allow the fire department, whether in Monville or Eastlime, because there's an issue as to who would respond initially, but to access that pond for purposes of fire.
So, there's really no issue who responds, it's Eastlime. And Eastlime's coming from Flanders. So, you're looking at a minimum of a 12-minute response, and that's being judicial, with no traffic on a good day. So 12-minute response, understanding that fire grows twice its size in every minute. 12 minutes, that's, that's, fire's now grown 24 times the size that it started. Guess what? You got 24 units, they're all on fire now, because you had one on fire, and by the time the fire department got there, you got 24 on fire. The other thing is, you're showing carports on all of these units. We got electric vehicle parked under that carport. Realize that it takes 8,000 gallons per vehicle to just cool that vehicle, not to put the fire out. Anybody that's paid attention to the lithium-ion scooters, the lithium-ion mobile ability devices, every day, every single day, I can promise you, across America, there's a fire because of lithium-ion batteries. Your fire protection's not going to be enough. It's, it's, it's just not going to happen. I lost a house here in Eastlime in 2015, right on East Pat. Guess what? There was a fire hydrant at the end of my driveway. Still didn't work. And you're telling me you're going to rely on a pond? Ain't going to happen. There's no way. You, you can, you can bring all the trucks you want, but the reality is, as mentioned before, we need police officers. We need more firemen than we need police officers. You have three firemen on duty, folks. Three. What are you doing with three firemen? And that's, that's if two of them are on ambulance call. Now you got one, one guy in a truck. It's not going to happen, folks. It's not a good idea, it's not a good location.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Heather Longo Rassicot, 38 Holmes Road.
You might need to spell your last name, if you don't mind.
Problem. Longo, L-O-N-G-O, space, Rassicot, R-A-C-I-C-O-T.
Thank you.
The prior approval referenced by Attorney Garrity, it's important to note that it included the land trust, that property that was recently secured, as well as our home at 38 Holmes Road. Much larger, larger, significant geographical area. The affordable housing that already exists in town is sufficient. You have Thaler Apartments, Nichols Apartments, Deerfield Village, Ahepa, Twin Havens, the newly developed Rocky Neck Village. In addition to that, you have affordable housing through workforce mortgage program that's offered at Sea Spray and 38 Hope Street. Holmes Road and the neighborhood have a two-acre minimum lot. I understand that by general statute, the affordable housing is exempt from that, however, the rest of us have a two-acre minimum. There's a well impact, not necessarily to how they plan on developing the well, water supply for both drinking water, as well as fire suppression through, I'm not even going to touch that again. However, the rest of us that have established wells, the construction- water supply for both drinking water as well as fire suppression through, I'm not even going to touch that again. However, the rest of us that have established wells, the construction that is going to need to occur with blasting because of the ledge could have impact on our foundations, our existing wells, and our water supply. Not to mention that we are not in a hydrated area. The impact of the viability of the affordable housing with the narrow streets, the increased traffic, we are not in an area where there is any walkability, as mentioned earlier tonight. We are not close to public transportation, and we are not close to any employment for affordable housing individuals. You're also looking at a large-scale development, construction over a period of time that will have a negative impact on the wildlife in the area that's recently being protected by the Eastlime Land Trust. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Sure. Denise Grosskopf, and I know I have to spell it for you. The G-R-O, S, S is in Sam, Sam, K is in kite, O is in Oliver, P is in Peter, F is in Frank. Lincoln Street downtown. The pictures always look nice that any architect gives you because you're not going to pay him for bad pictures. So I think we need to not think about those pretty pictures right now and think about the impact and the things that people have been saying. And I think we, you know, we hear a lot about global warming. I think we need to think about our responsibility to that. This is a farming community. We have seen our food lines being stressed through COVID. We have farms, we have food that people don't even realize that we have. And so I think we need to support our local farms. We need to be careful about our water. And other people have spoken so eloquently that I feel very inadequate saying this, but if, why would we want to put in that many houses? Because you know what's going to happen? The developer's going to do really well, make a lot of money, walk away, and then we're going to have accidents on that road, and people are going to start talking about needing more roads. They'll discover that maybe the sewer doesn't work the way they thought it was. We need to all think about the projects we've watched over the years, how they fall apart. So we're going to need the roads, the police, the fire can't get there. The police are going to have trouble getting there. And then who's going to pay for the taxes for all these things after the developer walks away rich? Us, the taxpayers. And that would be an unfair burden on us. So I want to think about global warming, keeping things greener. I want to think about the tax burden. I want to think about the fact that it's not really fair to put people out there in the middle of the farmland. Excuse me. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. I thought I saw another hand up there. Okay.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lindsay Muscarella. I live at 33 Upper Walnut Hill Road, which is just around the corner from this development proposal. I'm sorry, I'm super nervous. I'm going to go on and say what they did about the road. I heard from one of my neighbors that he had seen a traffic study, or the traffic study, and it was, you know, another 70 vehicles per day, which is, for Holmes Road, pretty astronomical. That's a lot of cars. As you cross down into Montville, the road just gets more and more narrow, and there's curbs on either side. I drive a minivan, and if I meet a school bus or anything, even anything much smaller, you're, you're right up there. And Montville is awful at cutting the brush down. I had to hound them for months. And I did. I called them, and they finally cut it once last year, but that further makes the road more narrow. And I have, you know, two small boys over here who are beginning to want to ride their bikes a little further, and going down Holmes is not, you know, really possible for them because of that. Also, let's see, oh, and our road on Upper Walnut, because you know not everybody's going to go down Holmes and go to Route 85. They're going to go down Upper Walnut, and they're going to go down Grassy Hill one way or the other. We live on a straightaway. It's like a quarter mile straightaway, and people are already going fast enough on that section right there. I know, you know, there's like small little cars and motorcycles. They see it as a chance to downshift and just take off. And, you know, that's just one other thing I thought about with regards to something being built of that size. Also, public transportation, like Heather said, there's nothing up there. I think the nearest seat bus stop is either Costco or Stop &amp; Shop, if not both. You have a couple businesses down the road in Montville and some up in Salem, but that's it. This isn't New London. There's, I thought the point of affordable housing was to have public transportation, whatnot nearby. And just kind of like a, I don't know, not to get emotional about it, but everybody talks about like the small charm of Niantic, you know, Niantic, Niantic, Niantic. What about us up in the woods? We like it where we are. We move out there for a reason. My neighbor, my immediate next-door neighbors, who are absolutely wonderful people, they moved from Cardinal Lane, which is more of like a suburban-type area, next door to us, and they have cattle. They farm. I know the Colyles are here, and they are, you know, huge farmers in the area. So to have, you know, honestly, an eyesore like that go in, if I could afford to buy it, I would have bought it and just left it as is. But just think about the north part of town, up in the woods for once, and not, you know, just leave it the way it is. Oh, and what I meant to say was before, our neighbors moved where they are now so they could do all that farming. And, you know, it's just our own little tranquil area, I guess. That's about it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, and I'm M-U-S-C-A-R-E-L-L-A.
And thank you for that. Is there anybody else from the audience that would like to speak? We are continuing, it looks like we'll vote on it, but the meeting, so there will be another opportunity to speak. If the commission agrees, could we have a motion to continue this hearing?
Yes. I make a motion that we continue this hearing.
Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? It passed 6-0-0?
Five.
Five. I'm sorry, we're missing, we're still missing people. Do people, do you feel a need for a small break before we do the regular? No, keep going. Okay. Move on to the regular meeting, and thank you for your presentation. First, we have the approval of the minutes from April 20th. Let's take a couple minutes to look over them.
Can I ask if everybody's read them?
Yeah. Is everyone ready to vote on the minutes? Or would you like a couple more minutes?
Couple more minutes. Okay.
Hey, Marvin, you come anytime.
Anytime. I need them. I need them. I need all the help I can get.
Okay.
You're ready? Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes from the regular meeting, April 20th, 2023.
Is there a second? Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Okay, 5-0-0. Next, we have the application of Dr. Kara Obodowski of the Niantic Vet, I have a hard time with this. I call them vets, Veterinary Hospital for a Special Permit to Operate a Veterinary Practice at Nine Lake Avenue, Niantic Accessors Map, 11.2, Lot 131. Is there a discussion on this? I think it's great she bought it and is continuing a practice downtown.
Yeah, I do, too.
Do we have a motion?
I would move approval of the application of Kara Obodowski of the Niantic Vector Hospital for a Special Permit to operate a veterinary practice at Nine Lake Avenue, Niantic Accessors Map, 11.2, Lot 131.
I second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
Madam Chairman, published next Thursday, effective on Friday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Opposed? 5-0-0. Next up, we have the continuation of proposed text amendment, Eastlime zoning regulations, Niantic Village bulk mixed use. Is there a discussion?
I'd like to make a comment.
Please.
You know, I think that there is no perfect solution to the problem we're having with preventing Niantic from losing its charm. But I think that this, that this amendment goes far towards doing that. It's not perfect, but I think it's valuable and will help prevent some of the major problems we've had with developers who want to combine several buildings into a giant single building. So I would enthusiastically support it in spite of some flaws that may be there.
Okay. Any other opinions?
I have one question. This would totally disallow a third floor, correct?
Your height limit is 30 feet. Let me just get that back out. Bear with me for a second. This would allow, as proposed, again, second-floor residential units over existing first-floor commercial uses in existing buildings, square footage to be no greater than the existing first floor.
Right.
Second-floor residential units may be added as a new second-floor addition to existing one-story building. Parking in accordance with the requirements in 22, height as the per section. So your height still could be 30 feet, but it implies it's a two-story building, is what it implies. And I would just say, if this is approved or denied, there are still other things we can look at and things we can refine as we move forward, depending on what the commission chooses.
I still applaud the spirit of this and the intent of this. I'm not comfortable that we're there yet. I also think it would be worth looking at redoing the parking regulations to control the size of the building, changing how many parking spaces are needed for a building. Again, I applaud the spirit of this, but I don't think I could vote for it as is.
How about using this as a starting point?
Number two is what really bothers me about the square footage. Because when I look at some of the buildings, like between Martin House and Sniff, I mean, some of those little cottages are like, almost look like 15-foot square, almost. And to me, if someone wanted to combine one of those with the one behind it, it wouldn't be keeping the same footprint, but to me, it's, it would not be too big. So I just feel it's a little bit restrictive, and I just would like to see us go back and maybe look at it one more time. That's all.
I personally would like to go back and look at it one more time. But I also like the spirit of it because, as we discussed on the subcommittee, we turned the valve on for development, and then now it gives us a chance to like, you know, see what's really going on and what we really need. And then it kind of like shuts the valve off and kind of changes things a little bit. But I'd like to have one more look at it with the subcommittee and then really kind of take a look at the things that Chairman Thurlow talks about with the parking, which is a concern that I also have. Parking here is a big issue in that area. So that's how I feel.
Can we, can we get this approved and then, so we can put the finger in the dike, so to speak, and then go back and refine? We can come up with as many zoning amendments as we want to. I think this is a good starting point. It will help prevent what's been going on. Not that it's a bad thing, but we don't want too many, too much of downtown to be demolished. Rumor has it, there's rumors going on that this and that, going to be knocked down. I really feel we can go back. I'd be glad to go back and do more, do something, tweak it. But I think we have a tool here. It has, as has been said, it's not perfect, but it will do, it will help. And we can always refine it and be glad to get right back at it.
Can we, can we agree on a, if we agree to that? Could the subcommittee agree, since you, me, and the other, can we agree to an actual date where we actually go back and tweak it, if we agree on it tonight?
I'd be very happy to.
Okay.
And I just, I just want to get something in place to help discourage what's been going on. We've, we've had enough.
To your point about parking and stuff, I feel that this would not allow for the size of buildings, so the parking problem is already going to be improved by this, even though it may not be perfect yet.
But if they buy more than one property, like they did with another property?
Well, they wouldn't be able to merge the two. They'd have to keep the same footprint.
And that's what I have a problem with, because I think some are so small, it's restricting, and it would be okay to merge them. And like someone in the audience said, you can do something a little bigger, but with the architecture, make it look almost like two separate buildings. So that's just me. I just think it's a little bit too restrictive, but...
Well, remember, it's only mixed use that we're addressing. You can tear down all the buildings you want and build something else, retail, for example. We already disallowed multifamily for this very reason.
So what if it's currently a residential, but someone's buying it to make it mixed use? They could not combine two little buildings, then?
Not according to this.
You can combine two little buildings.
But can't make it mixed use.
You can't build a big one. You're going to use the same, same footprint. You can convert one little building, put a second floor on it.
But you couldn't combine two with this.
No, because then you're not keeping the same footprint.
Yeah, that's, that's my problem.
Well, could you, could you take two buildings and connect them?
If you're asking me a question, you could take two commercial buildings and connect them. you could take two commercial buildings and connect them. This, the way this mixed use is set up, that's questionable, because let's say, for example, there are two one-story buildings on one lot. And Partier buys it, and he wants to put a dwelling on top of each one. The way this, of course, that in itself would then, based on the way this is written, it may allow that, because the second-floor residential is over the first-floor commercial use. So if you convert one, both buildings, if they're not already commercial use, they could become commercial. You could put a second story on them. But I think the question was, can you join them? And if you're joining them, now you're adding square footage by two buildings that are separated by ten feet, twenty feet, and creating that space. And then the question would be, I can't put residential units over that connecting space, because it didn't exist.
Yep.
Based on the language that we have. As we have found over the years with language, sometimes we have to go back and tweak them. I mean, we adopt regulations, and we have subcommittees, and the professionals look at them, and we give our best effort. And sometimes we find when we start using the actual language in a real scenario, that there may be some things that need to be polished or addressed. And when we start using these, that's when we find them out.
Let's, I, I ask you to get this in place and go right back, and we'll do more. But I'm afraid of the rumors. Rumors often are true, and I just hate to see more history being removed.
Yeah, I agree with Norm. I think that to delay this is opening a door for people to rush in and try to get in under the wire before we do something about this problem. And we may lose some of the buildings that we wanna keep. So, you know, I see no downside to passing it now and going back later. I do agree about the parking, but I think that's a different issue. The wording of this just says it has to meet the parking regulations. So if we change the parking regulations, then this will change too. So I hate to see it delayed any further, but, you know.
Are we ready to vote, or any more discussion?
Was there a motion drafted? I don't, I could...
You keep crafting, you have a memo from me. I think you could just, or just take it off of the agenda.
All right, I'd like to move that we accept this text amendment.
Excuse me, Mr. Pecker, approve or deny, please?
Approve the text amendment from Section nine, CB, Commercial Zones, Section nine point two point three, Mixed Use Development, and from Section twenty-five point five, CB Zone under Mixed Use. Also add Section nine point two point three, Mixed Use Existing Buildings in CB Zone, as presented.
Okay. All those in favor?
I'm sorry. No, I have a question. I would like to add a date in there so that we have an actual date where we're gonna come back and revisit it, so it's not a year later, or six months later. I would like to know if the subcommittee, we can approve it tonight, as it is? And then we can tweak it next month?
First week of June.
First week of... That's what I'm proposing.
Not part of the motion.
Yeah.
Not part of the motion, but that discussion.
You want it part of the motion?
Yeah, I want it part of the motion, so that way it's done.
So you wanna add what?
I would like to add that we meet, the subcommittee meets one more time, and we tweak it, we accept it for now. That way it stops anybody's, like Norm said, slipping in. And that we'll tweak it for now, but with the intention of, within the next thirty days, we'll have a meeting.
Is that all part of the motion? That you put your discussion?
Yes.
Sure.
It's Norm's motion.
She's amending the motion.
Yeah, I'm amending the motion for that date, so we can come back, we can tweak it, and then it'll...
Clean it up.
It'll clean it up, yeah, that's right. So, we're looking at like, the first week in... What do you say, Norm, the first week of June?
Yep.
First week of June. How's that look for you? Does that sound good to you, Ann?
That's fine.
Or you just wanna just vote?
No, we need a second, I'm amending the motion.
One second here.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Four ayes, all those opposed? Me? Anyone abstaining? No? It passed four-one-zero.
Madam Chairman, published next Thursday, effective on Friday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we are coming back, the first week of June, to tweak it.
Next, we did have the application of Kristen Clark, but that was continued, so we can move on to Old Business. Subcommittees, Architectural Design Review Regulations for CA Commercial Zone.
I would just make this comment, that I was going down a path, a separate path with that on the CA Zone, but after the performance of the zoning commission at the last hearing where you did an architectural review, and I'm looking back at those regs, I'm gonna change my, the approach, and it's gonna be very simplistic. I'm just gonna adopt the same regulations, I think, propose those in the CA Zone, so I think I can move very quickly, hopefully, for June.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I have nothing further.
Okay. New Business? Does the commission have any business they'd like to bring up?
No, I'd just like to say downtown's looking really nice. Debs looks really nice. I really like the changes that she did there. I think she did a fabulous job there.
Yeah, it did come together. I would just add, I was gonna wait till zoning guy.
You're next up, so go ahead.
Application for the scale for the Town Transfer Station.
We haven't got there.
I do not...
It's on the agenda under New Business.
Oh, it wasn't put on my agenda, sorry. So, can I borrow yours?
All right.
Yeah, we were actually just at Old Business on the Architecture Review and the comments, so I don't know that we got there yet. But I just wanted to add, I saw her at Debs a couple days after the last meeting, and she immediately went to work and changed everything out. There's a few plantings we still wanna get done, but in my opinion, it's a vast improvement, opens it up, makes it more pleasant for everyone. And I think it helps add to the ambiance and character of downtown in the village. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Oh, sure. And thank you for your agenda. Application for the town of Eastline for a special permit for a scale house, scale and restroom of the Eastline Transfer Station, property located at ninety-one Roxbury Road, Niantic Accessors Map, fifteen-point-zero, Lot two. So that will be scheduled?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Okay, thank you. Yes, thank you. Okay, thank you. Mr. Mahoney, do you have anything else?
I really have not much to add, other than the Exit Seventy-five project is probably six weeks out to opening. I actually think they may have put down the first bind, of course, for paving the last day or two. But that's moving along very quickly.
Great. It hasn't been as bad as we imagined so far.
It's coming, it's coming together. We're, I will say, at this time in these types of developments, there's a lot of loose ends that we're dealing with in building code-in and zoning. A lot of little moving parts, and then a lot of, hey, what happened to this, what happened to that? This is what you showed us, this is what you gotta do. But that's routine for all of these.
Yeah, thank you.
I plan to shorten your evening. The board of segment meeting was canceled for yesterday, so there's no new business on that account. One of my other ex-officios would be the Commission of Natural Resources. And at that meeting, there was considerable concern expressed about the recent heavy rain and excessive runoff of sentiment at the gas station development. And in spite of the silt fencing that had been placed and was required, that was not sufficient to hold. And there was a considerable amount of sediment and water excess from that site going down into the river. Also, concern expressed about the development on Bridebrook Road, where we heard previous comment at that meeting regarding silt and debris washing into that brook. And at this time of year, this is very serious, because this is the running of the alewife. And they only, they come up to spawn and then return, so, return to the ocean. So it's, these are two, in my opinion, very serious problems that I think need to be further addressed, beginning more with inland wetlands and your commission, but just to inform you of that. Also, additional runoff from the Soapy, Soapy Noble? No, Soapy, what is it?
Noble.
Soapy Noble. Couldn't read my own writing. The Soapy Noble, also, there was noted by one of the commissioners, excessive runoff from that site, which of course feeds into the brook. I've also been asked to bring up the issue, or the question of the Aquifer Protection Agency, and whether any of these concerns would involve protection of the aquifer. And your subcommittee has not met for some time. And perhaps that is something that you might want to consider. And I think that's it for this evening.
Thank you so much.
Unless anyone has questions that they'd like to ask?
No.
Good.
I don't think so.
So one other thing, at the, about eight-fifteen, I think it was, there were over twelve-hundred people that had voted in the referendum. I don't know the results.
Oh, that was my next question.
But it's a pretty good turnout for a recent referendum.
That is. Wow, that's a great turnout.
Okay. All right, have a good evening. Thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Is anyone here that was at the May ninth planning meeting? No?
It was, Markovitz was there.
And so then, you'll be at the next one at June thirteen?
This man.
Yep. I just wanna, I didn't see Mr. Manning behind the large man that was sitting in front of him. So I just wanted to congratulate you and say we all look forward to working with you as a regular member.
And thank you.
Yes, thank you. We had five excellent candidates step forward, and we will be throwing the other vacancy in the upcoming meeting. It's been a long night. How about a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn the meeting for tonight?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.